Okay. It's five thirty. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Good evening, good afternoon, good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Pia, Town Council Chair for the town of Strafford. Today is Monday, March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and I am calling the special order, excuse me, the special meeting to order. The first item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
I motion that items one, two point one and two point two be considered together and that they be approved.
Are you referring to combining for discussion?
Yeah, combined for discussion, and that the reading of the above ordinances be and hereby dispensed with as copies have been previously furnished, and that the same be adopted as a first reading referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Second. I have a second by Councilor Poisson. So this is just discussion on the combination of discussion, that's all.
Point of order.
Mr. Can.
Will the votes be separate?
The votes will be separate. Any discussion? Seeing none?
No discussion.
Yes.
This is discussion just on combining.
Oh, just on.
Yes. You'll have a chance to talk. Any further? No? Okay. Seeing none, call to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes eight to zero. Yes, correct, Margot? Yes. Thank you. Ms. Dancho, back to the original motion?
Yes, to the original motion, that the first reading of the above entitled ordinances be and hereby dispensed with as copies have been previously furnished, and that the same be adopted as a first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Motion for item two point one, for approval. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion on item two point one? Nope?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Ms. Rice.
Sorry, yes. I cannot support to sending this recurrent budget to ordinance because it does not address the serious issues in the fourth district or Strafford as a whole. Now, there are serious lack of resources in public works. It does not fully fund our schools or improve our public safety. I was excluded from the process of creating this budget, and I need a budget that does not ignore my communities and my communities' needs or Strafford's needs as a whole. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the item? As this is purely procedural, which we do every year to move it to ordinance. Mr. Can.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm gonna echo Kim's statement. As we discussed last year, there's a lot of, well, the fact that the four of us on this side, on this side of the podium were not involved in the construction of the budget. I know we have an opportunity to contribute during the workshops, but given the experience of the last few years, that's of, it's a very heavy lift to get any amendments or any adjustments made to what has been proposed. One of my main points is we have five point seven million dollars coming from the ARP, and it may not be mandatory to validate the town's loss of income due to COVID. I think it's a part of the due process, that before we consider a budget that incorporates money from the federal government for this purpose, rather than, say, for infrastructure development, that we should be at least cognizant that the town can justify that it needed that money for the purposes stated in the federal ruling, if you will. Okay? The Federal Act, thank you. I'm grateful that we have an opportunity not to increase the mill rate. That's good for everybody in town, but recognizing that, to repeat history, that some members of the town saw their property taxes go up by twenty percent when the mill rate, or excuse me, when the revaluation went up by twenty percent. It was not offset by any growth of the commercial grand list, if you will, and to echo Kim's point, those individuals should see an increase in the services that are available to them, be it public safety, public works. And a main point for me is we don't have a capital improvement plan, and given a lot of concerns related to Southend Community Center, we don't know what's gonna happen there, because there may be a plan, but it's not been shared. And in regards to the flood mitigation, which, as other councillors have pointed out, is a townwide problem, but possibly ninety percent of the flood issues occur in certain neighborhoods. And we, at some point, the town is gonna make an investment to mitigate the risks of water in those areas, and we'd like to see that done sooner rather than put it off. So the CIP and the documentation behind the ARP are two main issues for me. Thank you.
I'll defer to the mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, councillors, for your concerns. So per the charter, the mayor submits the budget. I didn't ask anybody about what to input, except for what I've heard you talk about. And I understand where you're coming from as far as flooding. It's a townwide problem, but it may be specific to two or more districts, more than everywhere else in town. But there are also things that we're doing, as you know from Public Works Committee and WPCA, all the grants that we're working for, applying for, and some that have been in the CIP, CEP, to address those issues. Not that they're, it's a panacea and everything is perfect, but we have, the problems have been identified and we're on our way to a solution. Now, the CIP, CEP is a separate document. It's not the budget, and so that's why it's not included here. As Chris Timniak said last year and Dawn Sabo, the Finance Director, we worked very closely with our legislative delegations, not just in Connecticut, but also nationally, to figure out how we could use the ARP money and how we've deployed it. You've approved some of it. For example, the TAC five that you approved last year, that was in the CIP, CEP program. You approved that grant allocation. No grant allocation can be approved without the town council's approval. So you do have options at the budget workshops and also communicating with yourselves to affect and modify this budget. And lastly, with regard to Southend Community Center, it has been pretty transparent, or we've tried to make it as transparent as possible through CDBG, what money was being funded to Southend Community Center in that building and why it was being funded, because of the needs of the community, to have more space available to them, as well as that food pantry, food insecurity program that they run, which is very, very critical to that neighborhood. So I hope you will move this to ordinance, because that's the process. And again, in the charter, I propose the budget. The Board of Education sends the budget to me, not to you, and then I incorporate it, their budget request, into the budget that I proposed to you, and then you decide. Thank you, Councilor Chair.
Anybody else for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Poisson.
If you can't answer this, maybe the mayor can. Taxes went up twenty percent.
Through the chair. No councillor, some evaluations, property evaluations went up twenty percent, but no, taxes did not go up twenty percent.
Anybody else who has not had an opportunity yet? Anybody else who has not had an opportunity yet? I wanna give everybody the opportunity.
No.
No?
I've already spoken, so.
Anybody else? If not?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sheik.
Before we vote on moving the budget and then the mill rate to ordinance, I'll just make my position very clear. There are several things in the mayor's budget that I do not agree about, and I would hope that we could find a way to better fund, for example, our Board of Education. I would also like to see a better distribution of how we are allocating funding. I don't agree that in those top positions that are mayoral appointments, that it's almost three hundred thousand dollars of salary increases. However, I do understand and respect the process, and I will be voting yes to move this from this particular meeting to ordinance, so that we can have those very, if necessary, lengthy discussions to come to some type of a consensus, so that we can figure out how to meet the needs of our town, and not just particularly perhaps our own district.
Thank you, Ms. Sheik. Anybody else? Okay.
Chairman Pia.
I'm gonna call for.
Just a point of clarification.
What is it? Yep.
When we got the reevaluation a couple of years ago, the tax assessors sent out a paper, a map.
What's the question? What's the question?
Well, let's call it a statement.
You asked for a clarification.
Statement to correct the record.
Greg, we're gonna call for a vote.
This is part of discussion. Taxes did go up by forty percent for every duplex in town. The real estate went up by forty, their taxes went up by forty. It was a one-to-one.
Greg, we're not gonna end, we're not gonna pick out every little thing and rehash a campaign here tonight. Tonight's purpose, I let you talk, I was respectful, tonight's purpose, as we've done for the last four and a half years.
The record needed to be corrected.
Okay. Well, your record is incorrect, so we're gonna call for a vote.
My record is correct.
We're gonna call for a vote.
For the tax assessor's own documentation.
In your mind. We're gonna call for a vote.
For the town's own.
All those.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
We're gonna, we're gonna call for a vote.
Point of order.
You and I can have a disagreement on this, but we're gonna call for a vote.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
We're going for a vote. Thank you, Ms. Sheik.
Can I ask for a point of order, please? And that's to the town lawyer.
What's the point of order?
My question is, in the inquiry that councillor Can is trying to inquire, just to correct the record, is there an opportunity during the discussion that that is allowed? Yes or no?
He's bringing a personal opinion, Ms. Sheik, and I'm not sitting here with information to have a conversation. I don't have any of the information to talk with him about it. The purpose of this, we'll hash it out in budget workshops, and we could talk about taxes, and we could talk about which particular homes went up more than others, okay? I have no problem talking about that. We'll do it in budget workshop. Fair? Thank you. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Two? Two? Okay. Motion passes eight to two, excuse me, six to two. Sorry. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, be item two point two. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
I move that item two point two be moved to ordinance for a first reading and public hearing.
I have a motion.
Actually, you're dispensing with the first reading to ordinance for public hearing.
Ms. Dancho, I'd like to restate for the town attorney.
Sure. I thought we were putting these together. I motion that the first reading of the above ordinance be and hereby dispensed with as copies have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and that the same be adopted as a first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second to the motion? I have a second by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion on item two point two for tax rate? No? Okay. Call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Nine to zero, Ms. French. We're just missing one, sorry. I wanna make sure we're correct from the previous one. You weren't here on the initial vote, that's why. Forgot. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Next item on the agenda is gonna be item three. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that the motion be to enter executive session to discuss the purchase of Sikorsky Memorial Airport, because discussion in public of such site and purchase and publicity thereof would adversely impact the price of such purchase, and that the attendees for executive session be members of the town council, the mayor, the chief of staff, the chief administrative officer, and town attorney Flark.
Mr. Chairman is so moved, as so eloquently stated by our town attorney.
Mr. Poisson, thank you, sir. Do I have a second to that?
Or Dancho's second.
I have a second by Ms. Dancho. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We will go into executive session. Thank you.
I'm going. It's your.
I'm going. I can't. This is this way. You stand right here.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm gonna get this one.
It's a little.
Sometimes they get out.
You look at the board.
They get out.
They're like.
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 This is a big, a bigger hit.
Yeah. That's pretty much all we're gonna do.
I don't know if they asked, but I think they did, so.
I want to make them aware.
Yeah, they should. Then it's all, it's a brief, you take, you know, we only have one, dispose of them.
And it, the, um, the whole state is pretty well filled up. They have things, uh, the northeast is filled up. They've got, um, Maine, they found the E-flows. And so, they can't dispose of that in Maine. They can't generate it in Maine. So they got it out in the offshore, so they have just got, um, we only have a lot of plants that they brought. So a lot of what they have, they already have a relationship with the last eight minutes and so forth. So if we try to go anywhere else, their big customers like we only are, we wait out of us, we do our best to finish just wrapping the field in. And, you know, I can shop around a little bit, you know, if I have a little truck here and there.
People does the condoms, I don't know if they have the answers, I don't know.
Who's that?
I don't know what person I need their requirements for.
I haven't thought about that. I could make that call.
I don't know.
I made a couple of calls a day, something around, see what's available. And I recommend like, they could, and we only sent a certain need to, uh, work, what if they're the customers, they're gonna stick with us, they're gonna take care of this. I guess they take care of all their own.
And then, there are other customers.
And last week, uh-
Yes.
And last week, uh, we only wanted six trucks to go and we only got four because the trucks are lying at eighteen, both, uh, facility, because thirty-seven, they're tanks that passed, which of course they are too. But we've been working out of all odds. Probably right. I'm back and forth on that. I originally was trying to tell you, does contract change? Can I have an application to, uh, the safety? And after an error, it was like, uh, there was some really contractors, applications, but again, that, uh, which isn't profitable. At that point, we're, we're, the mayor, and, uh, Dawn.
So Kristen, so just fair for her.
Yeah. Kristen. I guess. I'll go after, you doing my conference. And, I'm not sure that it's on, uh, I have some, uh, politicians to break the news. I remember, I was supposed to, uh, change, uh, attachments, something.
Chris doesn't think that's gonna be any progress.
Yeah. But I'm not, uh, but I'm a part of the, uh, something that isn't going to, of course, I always got in trouble with my old job.
Well, what job is it?
Maybe it'd be in source, right? Yeah, resources, probably. I think it's, 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 it's not worth it. So, yeah.
Did it go anywhere?
Not to go anywhere.
So Tom, is that the, the UI, the test results?
You got it, yeah.
I actually brought a copy and I didn't get it. Or, I forwarded it to Lori so they could see. Like, it was, there was, there seemed to be monthly non-tax, but then there was one part that there were two that seemed like they had some.
Yeah, but I should look up above, those same tubes.
Where, where's, where are the tests?
I didn't fully understand that myself. Well, matter of fact, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. So there, uh, so also you saw the emails, they're coming to do ground penetrating radar, really the test bits?
Ground penetrating radar? Is that how they're gonna do it tomorrow?
They're doing the ground penetrating radar, make sure there's no utility surface to where they're gonna do the touch bits.
Okay.
And then, or, yes?
I knew they were coming to look around, Lori, and realized that's what they were doing.
Yeah, so though, you know, see if there's any condoms with a little grain with the radar. And if there's anything, you know, looks like it, yeah, looks like it's a, a problem, then move it.
I still have no idea how things like that work. It's just kind of fascinating.
Well, I don't know, it's like, it's like radar or something. It bounces, sends a signal down if something bounces back. And they almost, there's something there.
Yeah, I suppose, looking for dirt, it's a little different looking through the water.
Yeah.
Silence.
But, uh, it's like, I've been doing, you know, I do, I'm the ancestry, I do geology stuff.
Oh, okay.
So I'm trying to find information online. Great brain, parents. One of the things I'm trying to find out is where they, where they got buried. So, I found out where they're buried. And, uh, two, one set of them are buried in, they're all written in Richmond. One of them is in a family plot. Family plot is in a landlot full of parcel in the woods. And there's some headstones there, but they're not all headstones. You can't find them. And there's trees, but all in the brush. So the ground penetrating radar, you know, might scan over it and if you hit a, a headstone that's buried or played over flat, you know, you might, you might find it. So, uh, so I was thinking, whatever this stuff costs, if you rent it, just, we can go around, happy for a while.
Somebody that has access.
And the other one-
What county is that?
That's in Richmond. The other set's in a different cemetery in Richmond. And I was reading about the cemetery and said, you know, it's well kept and maintained, but the back sanders, I don't know why. It's a back sanders, I was out covering the gravestones. I can't find the gravestones in the back sanders. Penetrating radar, maybe, you know, find them. So it's, you know, some, someday I will find out. The town has some, they use utility, it's a, some of the cemetery stuff, they kind of, to, to work out. See if I can find out who they are. It's complicated to use, you know, do they rent it out of a box? Get my brothers and sisters to go lay it out and rent it out. Day one, it's kind of a cemetery. Uh, you know, never really worth it.
Just interesting.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see that. And probably if it was all buried or you'd dig it up from the, from the-
I love church function. I love some place like that. You can do, back up, finish the, the question. I should call, uh, I should, this is our, our son. Son? Or her son. Or they're buried. So, cemetery, the cemetery wasn't taken care of. It's, it's all covered up, but she's, uh, she wouldn't find it, she would be all, you know. That's where I get all the, there are, she checked it out. I could, um, so, I just, I should be right here. I'm looking at these low spots, I remember a little, I remember walking up. Pretty easy, you know?
Let's check it out, there's about this much of stone, so, oh, flat stones.
I was, I was, I don't know, I picked it up. I was, I was, you know, twenty years. And, um, I had the whole off kids, just, she was very impressive. Crazy. But it's important. While I was doing it, I found out that she has three other kids that are about a decade younger than I am. And it just, it should be-
Oh, right, yeah. Sometimes you wonder.
Yeah. Oh, well. I mean, I think I should probably go check out my cat, so.
You know, that's why I have to, they, they put the stones here for people to know that you just, you've been buried. It's as if you didn't exist.
Buried, yeah. I just, pretty much like the business world.
It's your problem.
Maybe not you thirty years from now, but probably about you for fifty years.
Truth, yeah, probably.
That's, I doubt it.
I'm really trying to find out is where, like, the Irish are. Cause I know the, the New England people, you know, they were always here since the sixteen hundreds. That's, I'm tracing back the, the Irish section. You know, I can't, you know, eighteen sixties. Yeah, there's no record, can't find a record of the earth, can't find a record of marriage, can't find a record of, uh, I did find a rec, not the records of their death, just found some of the headstones that are visible. They're, they're, you'll find them on search. And the, the, the ones that are not, it's, that's where, that's where I got this. Just trying to find some evidence of something. If really, well, I don't know where the, what the birth certificate is, if they can tell me where the parents name, in Ireland, like, in Ireland, search for, for the parents, try to find some information. But in Ireland, something, prior to nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, what, really? Prior to nineteen, what, it's hard to find. A lot of information. But the, the Baptist records are still there, so you can find the Baptists, if you know the parents.
I know, I know.
So up in the birth, the death certificate would have the parents name. So the birth certificate would have the parents.
I'm part of a trade school back there. I'm a man, such a loose guy. When I was a kid, I went to family trade. Family trade, so. I don't have to do that. You know, my great grand father, my great grandfather, he lost thirteen kids. One of them died, the other twelve, all these. High school, we have, I'm Catholic, it's not part of our place. And I'm retired, I'm also retired. I shouldn't say crap, but I've never taken a car. So I've, I'm not sure if you're disturbing, so I should actually, maybe when I retire.
Well, that's, I did it, my wife was adopted, so, with her, she adopted parents, passed away, she said it's time for me to find out who your birth parents are. So that's where we started the DNA testing. Um, we just kind of got obsessed with it, we found, we found her, to her birth parents.
Okay, okay.
The, the father, she died just as we invite, you know, so. She wrote about, that he died before he was alive. But she had the American note meeting, that's what your kids, that's your history, that's your birth certificate. So that was-
Professional law for that many years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we just, we just have to do a quick vote. There's a-
Okay, are we ready? Everybody good? Where's, everybody's coming?
Are we, are we gonna get back to my, my leg? Every year it was sort of, it was so hard. And we're just trying to push her.
Okay. Oh, wait, oh, wait.
Right, we have to treat, we're only gonna break it down.
Okay. We'll come back in. I needed a motion to come out of executive session, please.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Poisont. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Poisont. I have a second by Mr. O'Brien. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Thank you. And we're gonna start with the WPCA, and I'm, right now.